So, good morning. Today is December 15th, 2021. It's nine o'clock in the morning. I'd like to call this meeting of the Logan County Commissioners to order. Please rise for the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending. Item three, doesn't appear we have any citizens desiring to be heard. Item four, consideration of possible action on minutes of December 6th, 2021. Motion, we approve the minutes.
I will second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Item five, consideration of possible action on final plat- plat of Indian Ridge, section three, in the southeast quarter, section of 29-15 north, dash one west.
This language is rare.
Thank you. I'll move we approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the plat. Throw it to that. He's dodging. He's flinching on this.
Well, good luck with them.
Yep. Yes, good luck. That's over here.
That's over.
My right. But I need to hear.
Hand that in the phone, please. No, no, come on.
And then we'll throw it to you, don't they?
Oh, we know better.
Come here, officer. Thirty-eight in this section.
Hello, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay. We've already approved that, if I remember the vote. Then on to item six, consideration of possible action on bids opened and tabled on December 6th, 2021. So we'll start with 2022-12 Rock Hall.
Mr. Three would go with brown transportation since that's only good.
That's just for delivery?
Yes.
This is rock and rock hall.
Rock.
So it's a two-part bid.
Oh, excuse me, rock and rock hall.
So brown for hauling again.
Brown for hauling again. And we're gonna go with Stewart Stone out of Pawnee.
For pickup.
For pickup.
Cody, do you?
What's up?
Do you know what you're doing?
Brown also for Rock Hall and also Stewart Stone.
We, uh, we actually haul some rock out of the Seven Mile and at the time we paid for the extra fuel and mileage, it's cheaper to go to Quap Hall. Or Stewart Stone out of Pawnee.
Do they have product? That was the biggest problem we were having with them. They run, they run out.
Yeah. Normally, they'll have it before anybody else. Normally. I'm not gonna say they don't run out, but... They have a cushion over there. If it sprinkles, they won't have gravel for a week.
Yeah, that's kind of the spot that we were having problems with now. But we're gonna go with the Seven Mile out of Delisi, Seven Mile quarry.
For pickup.
For pickup.
And brown, since they're the only ones for hauling?
Yes. At $27 a ton. My goodness. Yes, ma'am?
If you all would like to make your elections, then we'll take it as one motion. I'll read them out and then we'll do it as one motion. Does that work?
That's fine.
Okay.
Item, our next item is 2022-14 Asphalt Products. District one is gonna go with TJ Campbell for asphalt products.
Is that both picked up and delivered?
Well, this is for picked up.
Okay.
And, well, Haskell lemons is a little cheaper, but I've been having problems with them. Monty, you said you've been, they've been delivered to you okay?
Yeah, I like Haskell lemon. That's, District three is gonna take Haskell lemon on off.
They're, they're a little cheaper, but I think we'll go with them. And if we run into supply, we've been, supply issues is what we went to. If we, if they break down, then we'll, we'll go with the next in line there.
Chairman, can I clarify?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you doing Haskell for both pickup and delivery or just delivery?
Pickup right now. Uh, delivered is TJ Campbell.
Okay. TJ Campbell for deliver, Haskell to pickup.
Right. District two's gonna go TJ Campbell for both.
And Monty, you said that Haskell for both?
Yes, except for, I mean, I don't know if you're including crushed asphalt on that.
I'll set that aside because it's a totally different animal. So Haskell is both on that. So now crushed asphalt for...
I think TJ Campbell's the only one at bid.
Think there's only, yeah.
Yeah. We'll, we'll go with them.
TJ for all, all districts. Okay.
All right. Next item is dash 15 Asphalt Laid In Place. And this one is a little more complicated, but Haskell lemon looks like it has overall the best price. So we're gonna go with them.
Three as well.
Two as well.
And then base repair, dash 16. We're gonna go with Haskell lemons on base repair as well.
District three as well.
District two as well.
Okay, so I'll repeat these for the motions. Rock, picked up. District three, Stewart Stone. District two, Stewart Stone. And District one, Seven Mile, Delisi. Rock delivered, all three districts, brown transportation. Asphalt delivered. District one, TJ Campbell. District two, TJ Campbell. District three, Haskell lemon. Asphalt picked up. District one, Haskell lemon. District two, TJ Campbell. District three, Haskell lemon. Crushed asphalt, all three districts. TJ Campbell. Asphalt laid in place, all three districts, Haskell lemon. And base, road base repair, all three districts, Haskell lemon.
Yes, ma'am.
Someone wanna take credit for that motion?
I'll move we approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the bids on Rock Hall, asphalt products, asphalt laid in place, and road base repairs. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved unanimously. All right. Item seven, consideration of possible action on quotes for repair or replacement of roof on election board building. Did we get a third bid?
We did for mopping, $67,580.
What was the other two bids?
Well, we had the two bids from Evans and the difference was the insulation, if I remember that correctly.
Yes.
So we had one bid from Evans for $59,900 and the other with the heavier insulation, $66,400. Then we had a bid from Salazar for $56,328.13.
So if I remember correctly, which I probably don't, one of those included or didn't include the removal of the air conditioning units?
That's correct. Salazar was the one, but it could be another $10,000 that we would have to pay to contract that.
Keep that one.
So we got three bids, but one of them is gonna be a lot more. Salazar would be a lot more because they wanna charge us more for the removal, so...
What about the mopping? Was moving ACs included or...? Yes, mopping did have a removal and so did Evans.
Yes, it says detach and reset AC units included. So mopping was $62,250. Evans is, where is the price? $66,400.
Is that for the equivalent insulation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, so the thicker insulation on the $66,000, okay.
There you go. So is the insulation the same with the mopping or not?
Yes.
I don't, is it, okay.
Yeah, they did, mopping did a, I think mopping did two, you know, the sheet and then the, the good on the insulation.
We have, I only got one sheet up here for that.
I think it was written at the bottom. I think there was maybe two different ones. I think. Maybe not. I do, it just did the...
No, this is just a price sheet.
Yeah, the one was for, yeah, the...
Sixty-two.
Roof, the other one was for the, the better insulation, the sixty-seven.
Okay, so sixty, sixty-seven's for the better insulation. Okay.
So sixty-seven, what was Evans on the better insulation?
It was... $66,400.
I don't know either company, so, I mean, I'd say Evans has got the better price.
Can you contingent that on them providing their insurance?
We can do anything.
That's just a request for whomever's gonna have to provide proof of insurance for anyone.
Are y'all familiar with either company?
I've heard of Malton before, but I don't know what, I haven't heard anything bad about him, but...
Well, can I say something?
Yeah, absolutely. We've had these three companies to come over to our facility across the street with our skylights because they're gonna be being replaced. And if I remember right, Evans was who we liked out of the bids. I, I can't remember the price and it was somewhat competitive, but whoever does the building across the street is probably the same company that had to do our skylights, just to keep it simple, so...
Just going on apples for apples on paper. I don't know about quality of work, but I'd say Evans has got the better price, so I would agree that we go with Evans.
I'll second.
With the better insulation.
Yeah. Okay.
Have a motion and a second. That's the sixty-six.
$66,400.
Okay. Yeah, for pricing. So have a motion and a second for Evans roping for $66,400 for the election board building.
I'm gonna take that out of sheriffs.
Yeah, I'd like, yeah.
Actually, we'll be taking that out of the maintenance. No, I'm asking.
I, I would think so, yes. Just building maintenance. It seems how that belongs to the county now. So I have a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Evans is the...
And I need to get, what, a copy of insurance, you said?
Sure. Okay, item eight, consideration of possible action on acknowledging receipt of notice of tort claim of David Hendrick and forwarding to Echo County Claims. I want to say that it's already at Echo County Claims because I've been called on it already.
I'll move that we acknowledge.
I'll accept. Or I'll second.
Okay. I'm a motion and a second to acknowledge the notice of tort claim. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item nine, consideration of possible action on regarding design of new county seal. I, I do have an update. It's, it's being simplified. We're putting the, for the draft, we're putting the, the black county inside the brown county seal, detaching the one from the bottom because it's not a plate cut out, so the one will be in the middle of the star. And right now, the, the challenge that I'm having is trying to find that font to make that, that font that'll be used on this because everybody seems to like that, to make that font round on the county seal. I've got a, a young man that does graphic design who, who's gonna help us with it, I think, and maybe get that done.
I'll see if I can figure out what font that is.
I thought you might know somebody that knows somebody. I could do that too, but I think he wants you to create his road for him too.
Won't happen.
All right. So that's, that's the update on the seal. We should have that, I should have something back at the end of the month that we can look at. So no action on mine today. Item 10, consideration of possible action on approving lease purchase agreement with Logan County District one for 2003. John Deere, 672 CH-2. And serial number is here in the minute, or in the, in the agenda. This is, gentlemen, this is what we talked about during our last meeting of the trust. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move we approve in a second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the lease purchase agreement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Next, I'll make my statements on that minute. All right. Item 11, consideration of possible action on lease agreement with Stillwater Domestic Violence Services Incorporated, doing business as Wings of Hope Family Crisis Service for office space at 219 South Broad Street in Guthrie, Oklahoma. Sheriff, would you like to say a few words about that? I mean...
I'll come up here so Chris can...
Thank you.
Stop that.
Thank you, sir.
I'll do it again, though, Chris, though. I spoke about this last time under staff comments about being able to provide office space for Wings of Hope and Stillwater as a victim's advocate for the county. We did receive their insurance paperwork. We visited Lowell. I, I told him what we were looking at doing. He's the one who wrote up the agreement for us, sent it to Wings of Hope. They had no problems with it. This is actually gonna benefit us and citizens of Logan County and really doesn't have an expense to it. The infrastructure is already there in the building, so I just see it as a great partnership for us to be able to to tend to ensure our citizens have the resources if they need in times of trouble.
Gentlemen, I, I move we approve the assault agreement.
I second.
Monty, you got questions? I'm sure you do.
Yeah, you wanna explain to the folks watching the deal how, how it's gonna benefit the citizens of Logan County?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
In this day and age, you know, we, that, that's an excellent question, Monty.
Well, thank you.
You know, whether it be domestic violence, sexual assault, things of that nature, when they come to the station or we go to the scene to take the reports, we'll have resources to help them get through that trauma, get the bid, to get them out of their place, to a different place, to provide resources to help them cope with being a victim of sexual assault, domestic violence, or even child abuse. So it's a great partnership. Any other questions?
That's it for me, Sheriff, thank you. Thanks, Dave, good job.
Good job, sir. All right. We'll take the vote on that. All right. So I'll consider a motion on item 11?
You made a motion. We have a motion second.
I thought, I just heard a no, we didn't.
You didn't call a vote.
Oh, really? You wanna vote on that? All right. We have a motion and a second on item 11. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. There was a lot of distractions during that. I just wanted to throw that out there in my mind.
Sheriff, throw it out.
Okay. Item 12, consideration of possible action on detention transportation claim for the amount of $430.42 for October 2021.
I'll move we approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 13.
We have nothing for 13.
Nothing for 13. Great. Item 14, consideration of possible action on approving, receiving officers for various accounts.
That, the detention transport from this is the receiving.
Detention. Receiving officer, Ashley Tillman, records in the sheriff's office.
I'll move we approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve receiving officer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item 15, consent agenda.
Hang on.
Okay, so let's get signed all the tabs first. Now we'll be commiserating for... Birds, I do. Stuff the light later, man, for the eye of the dog.
This is all Steve's fault, by the way.
I was about to say Marvin got bullied last time.
I saw that. Did I get broken?
Trying to level it out. Spread out the love.
Like a manure pile.
Spread the fertilizer.
You know, if you give these things to y'all once, that just takes a long time to move through. These guys are sitting here looking at me like I'm the mid, the third grader.
Sign the first one, pass it down.
Only requires two seconds, so I'm gonna put that out there.
Kill you sign that sixth, I'll sign all the third.
Don't go that way.
Oh, no. I don't want to.
Maybe we'll start.
Did you date in Hales County last evening?
Good. Survived it. Okay. Looked like they had a good group there.
Yeah, four little people there.
But it was good. You still on good terms with the sheriff up there?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
It's just, yeah. That was just my, my kind of attempt at a joke.
That was, that was long ago.
Blanket numbers are there to correspond with these?
Oh, okay.
I just realized you forgot to compare how, how they match it. They're actually here. Do you wanna sign them individually?
I don't. I just wanna look at them.
I'll point them to replace everything that weren't there.
Okay. Well, I know the guys are cops and they're good folks, so... I didn't know they dealt with firefighters. So it's all first responders. I don't say...
Remind you again, what, I was sending checks yesterday, the treasurer gets a whole bunch of checks to the treasurer. They're consolidated.
The taxes we deposit with her, and then she makes the...
Okay, okay, yes. I knew there was a few, just watching, yesterday, I just wanted to refresh my memory.
I'll make a motion we approve consent agenda.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item sixteen, discussion of possible action on approving claims for December twenty twenty-one.
Got to pay the claims, Monty.
It's a good idea to pay them.
They can repossess our county.
I'll make a motion we acknowledge and pay the claims.
I'll second.
Were they looking at them? Have a motion and a second to acknowledge and pay claims, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
How did I get off so lucky?
You don't judge yourself.
I don't know, what's up with that? It's never happened before.
The end of the month could be a whole, you may have just done it.
No, that's fine, I'm good with that. Twenty at the end of the month, I mean, you might be...
That's actually the next five.
So, all right, on to item seventeen, discussion of possible action on approving purchase card payments for December twenty twenty-one. Pay card payments is totaled amount one thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. Window, air conditioner, looks like, or one.
Tell them we're having by AC in December.
Yes, it's here.
AC.
I'll make a motion we approve the claims, the P card.
P card?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the purchase card, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll run to our addendum. Consideration of possible action on consortium operations agreement for the Central Oklahoma Workforce Development Area. That's kind of a weird way to put that, okay. Consortium operations agreement. So this is what we appointed Cody to at the last meeting, mine. They sent this workforce agreement, which was well stated, that it's like eighteen pages or nineteen, seventeen pages of confusing verbiage, and several pages of signature sheets.
And nine pages of signature sheet.
Anyway, I guess I'll move we approve, although I still don't know what this, what this group does, because in all these pages, it doesn't really explain that.
Cody's on the board, he should know.
Cody will report back to us at some point, what they have with you there, so we'll make sure we plan plenty of times to meet and discuss. So I'll make a motion we approve the...
I'll second.
I think we're on one signature page for Logan County.
Right.
Yeah, it's just the chair.
So a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously and reluctantly. All right, item two, consideration of possible action on permanent road crossing permits, urban cable construction, two inch HDPE.
So where's this at?
So it says, it's parallel east of...
Seventy-six.
Seven sixty, road one point nine miles west of I thirty-five, forty northeast, I don't read.
Forty feet east northeast to the southwest corner of section twenty-eight seventeen two.
Yeah, but that, I still don't know where that's at.
Likely Cody's area.
Huh?
Likely Cody's area, what's the thirty-five?
It could be, or, yeah.
West of thirty-five?
West of thirty-five, it could be mine.
West, yeah.
Or it could be mine's.
Could be. County Road seventy-six.
Twenty-eight seventeen two is going to be pine...
Yep.
North of County Road seventy-six.
That's my area. It's going to be Cody's new area here, about twenty.
It's currently yours, but it's...
Really in fiber optic.
Early in the way, by the rules, so that's the question.
They've signed that they are.
So if they dump, can we dig up in the back house?
It costs you.
Echo, probably need to prove that.
Catching up, bud.
All right.
I don't have an issue with it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the cable going in, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Here's the signature sheets.
They even...
Of course. Okay, item three, comments, announcements, questions by the mechanical commissioners or other officers and or department heads. Steven, anything for you, sir?
No, sir.
Nothing this time.
All right.
Thank you.
Here, Mr. Brooks.
This is our last meeting before Christmas, so we wish everyone Merry Christmas, and stay safe, and enjoy the warm weather.
All right, thank you. Monty?
I have nothing.
Nothing.
All right. We'll entertain a motion for item four on the addendum, which is consideration of possible action of adjournment.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you, gentlemen.